Anna Cola. Thank you. Anna Colama-Musi is our staff member, city staff member today. One of our lead planners and she will be organizing the meeting for us. She's not going to be on camera, right? She's bowed out of the camera today, but she is here and she will be hearing from her throughout the meeting. So glad you're on, Anna.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
We are hoping, I'll just give a little bit of preliminaries here. We are hoping that we don't take more time than we did last time. And we'll aim for an hour and a half at the most. We want to get through the material quickly, but we want to do it thoroughly. And with many of you have done some good research and you want to report on some things and then we're anxious to hear that today. So I think we're going to start with roll call and then we'll refresh what we discussed at the last meeting. And I'll just do that in a couple of minutes, just to refresh our memories. And then I'd like to call on the task groups, whoever would like to present something. We'll go down the list one through 10 to see if you've got something you want to share. And so I know a couple of you have already sent in some support graphics or PowerPoint to help go along with what you're presenting. So Anna will try to get that up and share her screen with us when we get to that. And then this meeting, and then I think at that point Anna can confirm, we'll call out for public comment. Would that be? Yeah. That'd be a good time for public comment. And then we will focus the rest of the meeting on some of the questions we have. And that we hope to have presentations on, like what are native plants? What types of policies and designation are we looking at? And kind of clarify some of the things we've been thinking about in the first meeting and in this meeting. And then our third meeting, which we hope is our final meeting, will wrap this all up. And we'll really focus down on confirming what our consensus is on our first steps forward. And then identifying those things that we're going to park on the side for now, but maybe still need some attention. And then figuring out what we're going to do as far as writing our committee recommendations. So our third meeting will be focused on tying up all the loose ends, focusing on writing our committee recommendations. And then those committee recommendations will go to city council and city council will. Anna, correct me if I'm wrong here, city council will authorize that staff be more specific about what codes and policies would change and that would go through the commissions. Is that correct?
That's correct. Whatever the consensus is moving forward, council will consider it and direct staff to move forward with the next steps to implement the consensus.
So that's kind of a high level overview of what we're aiming at. I think it's good to refresh our memories on that. Because we're all plant geeks and we can get down the rabbit hole really, really easily. So focus is going to be one of the things we end up doing here pretty soon. Okay, so Anna, if you could pull up the PowerPoint that I sent to you to refresh everyone's memory about what we talked about last time. And so I updated the first PowerPoint that we presented. Next slide, please. And so if you remember in our meeting number one, in the red here is my summary of some of the things we talked about. So we were talking about why use natives and we kind of focused on improving local habitat for specific wildlife, increasing pollinators and visually blending to improve the net, improve natural spaces. We gave some thought to drought tolerance and water conservation, but we kind of thought that can be achieved with plants that are other than natives. So perhaps that's not something we're focusing on specifically. Next slide, please. So our meeting number one comments were that our community goals were two. One was environment, one was community planning. Environment be good stewards of our open spaces, beach, parks and natural environments. And then as far as community planning, maintain safe and livable communities through well maintained infrastructure and facilities, strong public safety and significant environmental standards, while achieving diverse and affordable housing to present and future generations. I think that comes from our, from our general policy. And specifically in red, you'll see, and I won't, I won't read them all, but some of the things that we discussed at our first meeting. Next slide, please. So our task level goals are to create an ordinance or policy on native plants to identify what are the natives in Encinitas. And I know we'll talk more on these things today. To identify the types and regions, zones or properties best suited for native plants. We're talking about that as far as where are the best places in our city to promote more natives. Address edge communities associated with those good areas. And to identify planning, design, permitting, construction phase and maintenance stewardship needs and requirements. Next slide, please. And as far as task level goals, we want to make sure it's doable. So that's where the focus comes in. Our first step, we can't, I'm assuming we're going to not be able to do it all in our first step. Coordinate with associated policies, identify incentives, demonstrate demonstration gardens opportunities and integrate the knowledge being coalesced by the county. Next slide, please. Just as a reminder, we were talking about new projects that come in for discretionary permit, that go, come in for discretionary permits. We were also talking about including public facilities, so that'd be buildings and if other infrastructure like roadways comes to mind. We were also talking about integrating HOAs. We talked about single family detached, but I think we maybe parked that a little bit. So it might not be as high of a priority, but I look forward to hearing what people have to say today to rethink that. And then as far as supportive efforts, and these may also be things we kind of park on the side, but we think are really important. Education and outreach, industry education and support as far as the landscape industry and the nursery industry. And identify what funding is needed. So these are things that are going to be important to talk about. But our primary objectives today are to hear what more information, more brainstorming, more, more drilling down on what this very educated group thinks about how we should move forward with these objectives. And so I think that's the end of this reminder about last, our last meeting. So I wonder if we need to do the roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Pull up the list from last meeting. So I have from the council members, Joy, you're in attendance and we know that Kelly is absent today. And then for planning commission, we have Kevin Doyle. And let's see here, I believe that Kevin, are you the only one from planning commission in attendance?
I see Susan Sheridan is here as well.
Hi Susan, great. Thank you so much. So we have Susan Sheridan. I don't see any other planning commissioners. And then I have from environmental commission, see is Ari in attendance?
Yes.
Thank you. It's a little harder for me to read and then go back and look at the name. So if you can unmute and tell me that you are here, that would be helpful. Then I have Christian Adams. Okay, so it looks like absent. And then I did see Katie Kramer.
Yep, here.
And I saw William Morrison.
Here.
Carol Parker.
Here.
Mark O'Connor. Okay, so no Mark. And Robert Switzer. And I don't hear anything for Robert. Let's see here. I believe this is now from the urban forest advisory committee. Mark, is it Jen? I do not hear anything for Mark. Then Brian Bishop. And then Tony.
Gurno.
I'm here.
Okay. And then we have, it looks like Carol Parker again and Carol Wolf.
I'm here.
Thank you. And then from city staff, myself, Anna Colamusi. And then I believe I did see Eric Steenblock. And David, David Orgard, are you?
I'm here.
Thank you. Um, do we have Carter Brown? Or anybody from the?
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you so much. And I think that's all I have. Am I missing anybody? Does anyone want to speak up?
Anna, you're missing me. Crystal Nahara, Sustainability Manager for the city.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Okay, and that is roll call.
Very good. Thank you all for coming. I was hoping no one was confused that it was going to be in person and, and now it's on Zoom. So I hope we caught everybody with that. But it looks like we have two people from the planning commission, four from the environmental commission and three from the urban forest advisory committee with Carol Parker doing double duty. So thank you. It's a good turnout. So what I'd like to do is jump into the the report out from each of you on the task that you said you'd come back with. And you know, if you've got something organized, great. I know a few you do. If you're just going to talk off the cuff, that's great too. And, and if you don't have anything to share right now, that's fine too. So let's just go through this. We'll hear each other's ideas. We'll, we'll talk about it afterwards to see where we might have consensus. And so I'm going to start with the top of the list. We had five task committees or subcommittee committees. And the first is identify what are natives? Do you want to include a secondary plant palette? And I believe Ari has raised his hand to report on this, to report to us on this item.
Yes, I'm very pleased to do so. And I want to give a lot of props to Tony. Tony really helped me out here. We met last week. And of course, we didn't meet with everybody who was on this one. So I think of, of course, this is not a final, but just sort of, you know, our thoughts at this point. So we, you know, really opted for simplicity as much as possible. You know, a few of us, including you, Joy, are involved in the county's efforts. And I think there's been some interesting product coming out of the county's efforts. And you know, I think both Tony and I really agree that, that simple is better. And, and, and doable is better and enforceable is better. And so, you know, with that spirit in mind, we are fortunate that for the definition of a native plant, there are several really reputable organizations that are working very, very closely with many, many jurisdictions, many municipalities, counties and the state to, to maintain active lists that we believe are quite good. And so rather than try to develop an actual list for the city of Encinitas, we think it makes sense to reference one or more of the following organizations that already have very good lists and use some language that, that you know, says, hey, you know, you know, we can talk a little bit more about, about geography in a second. But in particular, the California Native Plant Society has very good definitions and lists. One of the efforts of the California Native Plant Society is the Calscape Garden Planner, which allows you to put in like your zip code or do all kinds of really cool things, look at maps and just spits out lists of native plants for, for where you are. That's really outstanding. And then we would also mention as a third, you know, area, this, the third sort of areas, the wrong term, but third authority, the San Diego Plant Atlas. And that's a really expert driven group instead that catalogs all of the plants that are known in San Diego. And so I think one of the really big questions that, that we then have to deal with is okay, and using any of these tools and lists. And I think personally, I think it would be fine to use, to say that all of them are valid. If a plant is, you know, listed as native on any of those lists that the city of Encinitas could keep it native. We could keep it, could, could respect that. And then of course, one of the great things is that these are curated lists. So as new information, new botanical information becomes available, species names change or taxonomy changes, they, they do do that. And it's nice to be able to rely on them doing that rather than have to have a city process, you know, to do that. But you know, I think that, that, you know, I'll speak for myself, but I think Tony and I are on the same page. We would advocate for a relatively wide geographic definition of native. We certainly do not feel that, that something needs to be specifically native to Encinitas to function, you know, well ecologically and appropriately, you know, in our highly urbanized environment, you know, under changing climate scenarios and whatnot, and meet the spirit and goal of what we're trying to accomplish here. You know, we might, to be really simple, we might just say, hey, if it's native to San Diego County, then it's, it's, it's on the table. That's sort of one, you know, end of it. I think that if that's deemed as too permissive, you know, or too wide, you know, we might, you know, say, you know, something that more or less fits in our, you know, probably level two eco-region. But, but again, as a, as a plant ecologist and geneticist, I don't really have a problem with, with just saying, hey, if it's native to San Diego County, it's, it's permissible as a native plant under this proposed ordinance.
Ari, I just raised my hand because I was thinking we should use the raise hand so I can keep organized about if people have questions. So keep that everyone else, if you could just organize yourself that way, if you have a question. Ari, could I ask, since I don't know these curated lists as well as you do, the San Diego Native Plant Atlas, does it identify, say coastal regions versus say other, other types of regions because the county is so big and so many different geographies?
I mean, they do. Tony's raising his hand. Maybe I should let him talk first. Tony, why don't, why don't you go ahead and then I'll try it after you.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, they, they have a couple of different systems of organization in the SD Plant Atlas. It's a, there's a grid that's overlaid over the entire county. So there's essentially like boxes that you can find yourself within and they helps you narrow down the vast flora of San Diego. So that's something that we could also kind of reference. There's maybe two or three boxes that would sit where Encinitas is. And we could potentially just narrow it down to that. Otherwise, they do get into the plant communities, vegetation communities, like anybody who looked at that MHCP document would have seen. It just gets to be immediately complicated because the terrain is very nuanced. We're doing this project at Oceanal Elementary and there's four different plant communities within nine acres. And it makes things really difficult pretty immediately. And then I want to reiterate what Ari already kind of alluded to, that if you look at those vegetation community maps, almost the entirety of coastal San Diego is none. It's urbanized and disturbed. And so I, I'm not entirely sure, as Ari kind of mentioned as well. I'm not sure that it is the best return on investment to over emphasize that aspect of this.
And I, and I think another, you know, point that really bears on this is that, you know, we're, I think we assume, or at least the assumption I'm under is that the majority of the applicants under this program are going to be residential and commercial sites. You know, the, the, the natural areas, you know, that are under management in Encinitas are being managed by, you know, highly typically are being managed by highly professional organizations. Many of them managed by the city or the county, which, which have, you know, relatively robust management strategies and requirements for, for natural lands or, and/or have, you know, some of the great nonprofits engaged in our, that we're so lucky to have in our community, including the Botanic Garden. But you know, of course, you know, so many others, the Nature Collective and many others. So I think we, we don't need to be thinking about the scenario in which we're trying to execute what might be called an ecological restoration. You know, that's a very highly technical and, and you know, really science, that, you know, but, but applied science practitioner, you know, driven, you know, activity. We, we really, I think, are talking to, you know, the highly disturbed and impacts, impacted sites, you know, typical residential and, and commercial sites, you know, they're, they're, the landscapes that are on them are generally non-native. And you know, probably not using water as efficiently as they possibly could. They probably have a lot of non-native soils or at least highly disturbed soils and hydrology, you know, associated with them. And so being, you know, overly, you know, sort of rigid about ecological, you know, habitats and, and, and communities is, is, it probably will, as Tony said, I like his term, have a diminishing rate of return on investment. And, and I, and I think, you know, that, that's, it's also really important to create rules that people can, can not only follow, but also are excited to follow, you know. And, and so a little bit broader plant palette than, than, you know, we would get if we were just completely, you know, restricted to what, you know, is, is native within Encinitas or even just in the, the most coastal kind of chaperone or, you know, what we consider our most native habitats. I, I think it's wise to be there. So I'll, I'll throw out there as a straw man, just let's, let's right now just say native to San Diego County. Tony and I have discussed if somebody wants to try to plant a Nocatia, you know, from Anza Borrego here, you know, you know, you know, hey, go for it. You know, it's certainly not going to cause any problems. You know, so, you know, I think that that's okay. And then the, the last sort of part of this is we do want to acknowledge that there are, you know, state and federally listed endangered plants that are, are native to the region, but would be highly desirable to have in landscape plants. And so, you know, there, there's a complex series of potential laws that might intersect with that at, at multiple levels. But I think what we could pretty simply say is that if any state or federally, federally listed plants are to be included in plantings, the owner or the city, in the case where the city is the manager of the land, would really just need to certify that all applicable laws and regulations are followed to both obtain and outplant such plant materials. And, and one thing I did not mention here very purposefully is source selection. So again, we do not believe that, that it is worth a time or investment or difficulty to try to say, hey, you know, if you're going to plant a, you know, a, you know, Quercus agrofolia, you know, a live oak in Encinitas, that it needs to be from within five, you know, it needs to have been sourced from a mother tree, five or 10 miles away. That, that, that does not seem warranted. There's not a strong scientific justification for it on the kinds of properties, again, that we're thinking about here.
Okay, I want to, I just want to play the devil's advocate a little bit from the perspective of being a designer on private property or public facility projects. It me, it makes it easier for, for not only the city to review a drawing that's proposed, but also perhaps builds more success into the, the process when the guidance focuses people on the plants that would do best here in our coastal region, in the area, you know, where Encinitas exists. And so I, I, I'm kind of sensitive to the challenges that the staff might have with a large, with a countywide list, when some of those Anza Borrego plants probably aren't, aren't appropriate. Or you're saying, well, you know, someone can plant it, maybe it'll work. But I wonder if it could foster more success to have a hierarchy of plants that would be preferred based on where we exist along the coast. So devil's advocate, maybe, maybe other people want to ask. Tony, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I, I think that that's a very interesting point that you bring up. And it's not out of the line, but it does feed right into that immediately getting complicated thing that I mentioned. Because to be honest, a lot of those species are going to be increasingly suitable for coastal areas. And many of them do exceptionally well along the coast. And then there's those that exist in all of these places. So the bladder pod is an interesting example. It grows immediately along the coast, not in any of the foothills or mountains, but then also in the full blown desert. And so I, I think that you're on to something conceptually, but I'm not sure how to functionally get at drawing those lines in an exclusionary way. So one of the thoughts that I had related to that, that preferred plant list or alternate plant list, second plant list kind of concept was to just flip the original notion on its head and actually assert sort of a favorable plant list, if any, that would get at some of what you're describing, Joy, as a potential issue. But without saying you cannot plant something just because it comes from a different part of San Diego.
All right. That's fair. Susan?
Thank you. Let me put my hand down so that I don't forget to do it later. So I think that although there may be some species that are non-native, because as was pointed out, we're very urbanized and a lot of property already has been vastly disturbed from its natural state. I think that the idea of catering to non-native plants and trees and so forth is a bad idea. If you, for example, start having a demand for native plants, I guarantee you those nurseries will start working to supply natives. And birds, bees, all of the natural parts of our environment, they do much better with native plants than they do with non-native, even if those non-natives have blossoms and they're drought tolerant and, you know, they're aesthetically pleasing. I think that it's just not going to be as good of a solution for us in the long run. And I think we really have to look at the long run. I, I don't think it's a good idea to say, oh, well, they're selling, you know, ABC tree, so I'll buy ABC tree. I think what you have to say, as you create policy, is we will prefer and accept certain trees that are natives. We will not accept and prefer others that are non-native despite the fact that they're drought tolerant. But I think it's a percentage thing. You need to decide at the policy how much of it should be natives. We already have a lot planted. And of course, if you start cutting stuff down that's not native, you know, you're going to lose oxygen that's being produced and you're going to lose the absorption of the carbon dioxide that the trees provide. So you don't want to just like willy nilly cut things down out of a property. But I think it's very, very appropriate to specify that anything new planted be native. And I think it's very appropriate to have a certain amount to decide what's fair. Is one native tree per thousand square feet fair? And I also think protecting is extremely important, protecting what we do have. So that if we have a tree of a certain diameter or if we have a shrub or we have a net of a certain diameter at a certain height from the ground, we would preserve that.
I know, Susan, you've done a lot of thinking about that and, and I think we'll get to that later on as well. And you may have some other things to present. So yeah, thank you for those insights at this point. Thank you. So Katie, you're up next.
Yeah, just a couple of quick thoughts. Ari and Tony, thanks for putting all of your expertise into those. Those just kind of general principles. Those all sound reasonable, you know, my sort of non-expert standpoint. But I'm listening to the discussion and with Joy's concerns about maybe targeting species that are just more adapted to our coastal zone, could we also have a hierarchy that considers we already have like a tree palette that is selected for drought tolerance? So could we, you know, combine two criteria, drought tolerant and native? And that would probably eliminate a lot of those things, you know, and like higher elevations that might not be so appropriate to the coastal zone. And then we might also, this might get complicated. So just throwing it out there. But we might want to also have different criteria for different land types. So if it's open space, it's managed by the city, we might actually want to restore it. It might not be like a full blown ecological restoration. But we might want to kind of be a little more specific about what we put there versus, you know, street right of way or something.
Right. Like, yeah. I think we will also get into that a little bit further on. And maybe, and that's aligned to Katie with the, the kinds of things you've also looked into. So we look forward to your thoughts a little bit further on. But I think that's the direction we're going is identifying where there are places where it's perhaps more important. But, um, I think that's the direction we're going is identifying where there are places where it's perhaps more important to, because there's already good environment, good native, uh, environment there. Um, Ari, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, I mean, these are all great points, and there's, there's no really right way of doing this, honestly. Um, but I just want to be clear, what, what we're talking about here is really just the definition of native, right? That's, that's what we're on right now. Um, and so, you know, we are not at all advocating for non-native to be considered native. The, the, the real question is what's the geography that you're willing to define as native? Um, and again, just because of the kind of work that we do, and, um, again, I, you know, I think at the last meeting, I talked a lot about keeping our goals in mind. And if our goal is to be dogmatic and say native good, non-native bad, we will fail because we will not convince 99% of the people that that is a reasonable goal. Um, the reason why we're doing this is that gener- generally speaking, but not absolutely, um, you know, a, a, a well-informed native plant selection as, you know, um, as a major component of any given landscape in, in our region of California should be, uh, you know, better water use efficiency should, you know, support more, um, more wildlife, um, should be recalcitrant to many diseases and pests, um, and should in many, several other ways contribute to an overarching better environment. I, I wish it were true that those were just ironclad rules and it would, life would be easy, but unfortunately that, that it's just not the case to say that, um, you know, i- if you're, if you're fully dogmatic and say native only, even if you can come up with a good reasonable definition of native, that it solves all of your problems. It's, it's just not true that carbon dioxide sequestration automatically goes up and, you know, all the other environmental things automatically get better too. So I, I think, you know, we have to acknowledge that, you know, that, that, you know, commercial and residential landscapes, and again, we're really not talking about open space. Those are separate categories, and, and I don't think that this ordinance is meant to deal with them. Um, the, the, you know, these are, these are expressions of culture, much more than there are efforts to, to be a, um, you know, a ecological restoration. And again, ecological restoration makes very little sense as a scientific concept on a, you know, sixth of an acre lot surrounded by buildings and, and, and roads and asphalt and completely altered hydrology and soils and all that other stuff. So what we're really looking to do is to create a, a program that is acceptable and doable that overall increases the environmental integrity and quality in the ways that I previously mentioned, and native plants are a way to do it, but a, a relatively permissive um, approach that allows a lot of creativity in the art and, uh, and design of landscape architecture and related disciplines, uh, that does not tell somebody it's wrong to have a nice sized patch of tomatoes or, or fruits or vegetables in their backyard. It is really something that I think needs to be preserved in this process.
Good input. Uh, I'll go to Kevin, and then if there are any more questions, I know Ari has the next item to, to cover as well. Kevin?
Thank you, Joy. Um, so I'm looking back at the objective design standards that we just recently enacted, and there we actually, uh, we had originally referred to California natives, and we started specifically at planning commission level requiring 50% Southern California native plants, and that is the phrasing that went into the, uh, the newest design standards, Southern California native species. Um, and we're requiring on all multifamily and commercial projects, at least 50% of the total landscaped area shall contain Southern California native. We're also using a kind of a, a grid system, so you get points for different things, use bigger paths, you use, um, you know, it's a whole matrix, and, uh, one, one of the items is you get extra points if you can go up to 75% of Southern California native species or additional points for if you go up to 90%. But what is Sou- Southern California native species? It's referenced now, it's enshrined in law, but, uh, you know, the definition is, uh, not sure if we actually created one or not, but I think this is one of the things that William and I will be hunting down once we know exactly what it is we're gonna be doing.
And Ari, would you like to follow up on that?
You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's such a tough one. I think for simplicity, for us, San Diego County makes a lot of sense. You know, that being said, there's some wonderful Catalina, you know, it's species and, and a couple of other things that really work great, and you know, we, we certainly promote them. The garden is essentially, you know, native and, and they would meet that Southern Californian. But it gets complicated. I mean, we certainly don't want to say everything south of Santa Barbara is, is, is native and appropriate for, for, for us. So, a- again, there's really no per- you know, perfect and right way to do this. I, I think at least for the current straw man in this iteration, maybe just to say, you know, San Diego County is an awful big county, it's super plant diverse. We've got 2,000, you know, native plant species in San Diego County. I think that's, that's maybe a smart place to start from, and, um, you know, we, as we get deeper and deeper into this and, 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 you know, hear from the community and landscape architects and the other horticulturists, we might, we might find some ways to to, to circumscribe that with a, you know, a little more, um, elegance than, than we have so far.
Great. Kevin, are you still have a question, or are you? Yeah, okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Well, some good dialogue. Uh, in the interest of time, Ari, would you like to go on to the second task item?
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry. I think I said I'd be brief, and it's not happened. So, um, in, in many ways, horticulture management and stewardship and water use are actually even more complicated than species selection. Um, um, but also I think it's, it's really challenging to manage, um, to, to regulate, uh, you know, especially on residential properties, um, you know, what I would consider to be processed. Um, and so I think it, it, you know, it's in, insofar as we can frame what we want to have happen in terms of outcomes, um, rather than process, I think that that's good, right? So I wouldn't want to get into regulatorily telling people, you know, what, what the, the, the irrigation regime or, you know, specific, you know, other management things that they have to, because it's just so complicated and in an off-weather year or drought year, it's just so different than it is, and that, you know, we're dealing with the highly variable systems. So I think it's ver- it's pretty easy on city land, you know, the city already has a very robust IPM policy, which is an ordinance, it's not optional to be changed, it, it has to be changed by the city council. Um, and, and it's very strong, it was dealt with recently. So I think city land, you know, management is already in a pretty good place because they have to follow, um, you know, several regulations, including the IPM policy. Um, for the, for residential and commercial and other non-city uses, um, a- again, I think this is a challenging thing to enforce, and so I think that maybe the simple way to deal with it is to say, um, you know, whatever the approved landscape plan is, that that must be substantially intact 12 or 24, 36 months later, right? So, you know, instead of trying to dictate the management strategy, let's dictate the outcome and say, hey, whatever you do, this, this, this native, you know, landscape, um, you know, must persist for a certain amount of time, and that would force the, um, you know, that would force each landowner or land manager to come up with a management stra- you know, strategy that, that, that actually works. Um, in order to give guidance, um, there is a very, very nice document produced by the San Diego County Water Authority, um, that's called Sustainable Landscape Guidelines. Um, and I think that, you know, that, again, that, that's, that's another document that the San Diego County Water Authority, which is coming at it from a pretty strong, you know, water resource perspective, but they, they, they bring in other stuff too. Uh, we might not like it, but they do certainly allow what they call, you know, adapted species, which are non-natives, but, but do well with, with low water regimes in our, in our, in our county. But, but their management strategies are quite good. They, they go through the options of irrigation and pest and disease management and soils and water management in a way that's really, really helpful. Um, and I, I think that, that could certainly be looked at as a kind of best, best practice or guidance document. But again, it's, it's very hard to nail these things down in, in exact, you know, thou shalt, that, you know, you know, these are not, you know, they're, they're not electric codes, they're not, they're not building codes, um, you know, the landscape is a living thing, and, um, you know, kind of think, if you think of your landscape as your pet, you know, can you imagine telling somebody that they can't use a synthetic chemical even if their dog has a serious disease? Right? You know, that would not be viewed as, as appropriate. So there are these extenuating circumstances where, you know, you, you need to leave a lot of options open under certain, you know, conditions. So again, I'm giving a little bit of a hedged answer here, but I, I think that the goal, you know, which is to achieve those benefits of having a you know, major part native plant landscape is most achieved by saying it must persist, uh, you know, for some specific period of time in order to, you know, otherwise you get fined or there's some sort of penalty. Um, you know, I think that, that, you know, that, that's, that will drive the practices in a, in a very, very good place and, and, you know, reward those who do it well and punish those who, who are not really knowledgeable and, and taking management seriously.
Okay, um, Susan, you had your hand up next.
Um, I don't think we want to say, um, do you have to maintain it for three years or something like that? I think what we have to have is something that's in perpetuity. If we don't do it that way, the problem is that like at a place like Home Depot, they could just, oh, the tree died, so we put up a palm tree in place of that tree. That's not going to be cool. That's not going to work for us. So the problem with, um, giving them a three-year timeline or even a five-year timeline or something like that, um, you know, or a change of ownership timeline or any of those things don't really meet our objectives. I think if you want to have a realistic plan, you have to bet, right, with the same species that we have approved, not some different species unless overriding reasons such as we have pests that is destroying all those, and that move to the next one that's a net that won't be destroyed by that pest. You know, I mean, there are boring beetles, there are all kinds of things that can, um, come into play that could, you know, wipe out an entire grove of trees or whatever. But I think that we want to have a policy where our timeline is in perpetuity. We don't want to have just, oh, three years. I think the initial maintenance sure could be for that, but then every few years an inspection. And I also think in terms of species, you want to be very specific about which species you protect that are already existing. A lot of the native trees have already been cut down, they're never going to come back. And so you have to protect what you have a lot very carefully. And I think that new trees, as they're put in, adapt, it is one thing, but adapted to the climate and producing oxygen and removing CO2 is not the same thing as a hive of bees or flock of birds that uses that tree for its home. You know, it's not the same.
Great. Thank you for that input. Uh, Tony, would you like to go?
Uh, I just wanted to point out that, um, as much as we're going to have some of this conversation in parallel related to actual restoration and open natural spaces, which I think that would be better addressed frankly with an MHCP type of an approach, but for what it's worth in this conversation as well, I just wanted to point out how maintenance is a dichotomy there in addition to the plant selection, uh, dynamics, because what you'd see in a regular managed garden setting is not what we would like to see, for instance, in some of the natural open spaces that are more for habitat preserve type, um, you know, purposes. So, uh, as much as we can be clear in defining which areas are under what type of, you know, management approach or ordinance dynamic, it's going to help keep things simplified and streamlined in respect to this type of, um, aspect, because it could get super complicated as it gets really divergent. And I just wanted to point out that that, you know, applies here as well. So hopefully we can have a conversation about restoration and natural open spaces and not have it necessarily be the same conversation as residential yard plantings, but as much as we're kind of having that at the same time, I just wanted to point that out.
So you're, you're responding to Susan by saying, you know, there might be different strategies depending on the different zones that are being planted with natives.
Yeah, but I also just wa- was more generally responding to the premise and some of what Ari was getting into related to horticultural management of natives and something like preservation of individuals is an interesting difference between a designed landscape and a natural restoration project where what we want in a restoration project is for that landscape to become self-sustaining. It's not actually a good thing or relevant even that the individuals that we plant last beyond maturity, essentially putting out new generation. So other examples that kind of feed into this same category would be things like pruning practices, which we definitely don't have to get into here, but leaving dead wood, for instance, in a natural landscape is really important for habitat purposes, ecological purposes. But that's clearly not what people are going to want out of a managed landscape full of native plants. And this is something that could really easily bite this whole process in the behind because regularly, when I am having conversations with people about using native plants in their garden, they immediately think that you're telling them to have their front yard look like an unmanaged canyon. And I think that it's really important that we recognize both of those things as having their merits in different applications, but to not let them get too, uh, confluent, because it's not going to serve the use of native plants in the horticulturally managed setting. I can promise you that.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. Um, Susan, I think I'm going to jump in here and just take a turn too, because I, I did want to kind of test something that was, uh, presented as far as um, Ari, when you were talking about, uh, for the non-city projects, the residential and the, and the commercial as an example. I'm, I'm going to call in staff if they have something that, that they want to contribute here, but, um, from my perspective, I, I often, uh, am the designer on landscapes, and then it gets installed and I have oversight until it gets installed and is accepted, and I accept it as the professional in charge, and the city requires the landscape architect to accept it. Oftentimes, the developer, whoever's in charge of the land, who are the landowner, has a contract with the landscape contractor for, say, six or 12 months of, um, of, um, oversight, uh, where there's, uh, an arrangement that that landscape contractor will review and make sure there's healthy plants for that period of time. But after that, there's, there's no city involvement at that point, and after that, there's really it, it would be hard for the city to be tied back to that project to oversee, uh, the management. Now, I may be miss- I may not see some opportunities here that someone at the city might see, and this could be something we could, we could look back at, um, after this, but Anna, do you have any thoughts?
Um, you're, I believe that you're correct in what you're, um, saying. We do have conditions of approval that we've placed on projects that, you know, require them to show that within six months or one year, it's established, and you're right. Um, beyond that, um, we do not get involved in the, um, uh, monitoring of that. Uh, it could come through a code enforcement comment from, you know, somebody from the public that notices that a project is not in compliance with its original design or conditions of approval, and those are mostly for projects that are design review related, that have that type of permit associated with it. So that's where we can monitor it. But I would like to hear more of a focus on, on where this group does want to go. Public, private is, you know, are the private projects and the type of projects where the immediate focus is? Um, you know, as I've been hearing, we have, um, in some instances, in unique circumstances, for example, we had a project along the I-5, it's a scenic visual corridor, and we had a three-year monitoring establishment for landscaping to ensure that walls were screened, for example. So there's many ways in which the city has gone forward to make sure that, um, landscaping in general is established. Um, but nothing set in writing or, um, you know, policy that requires us to do such thing.
Thank you. That helped me a lot. I see with, that there's some precedent, uh, maybe not directly with the city, but with other agencies where, uh, that can be done. All right, thank you. And one more question from Susan, and then, uh, we'll try to move on to the third item. Susan?
Yeah, um, one thing that you could do, um, if you're concerned, you know, about maintaining different, uh, a variety of different types of lawns for residential, if you had a blanket ordinance that went over the entire city property boundaries, that is, you know, one native tree per every thousand square feet, something like that. And then you have a project, let's say, where they don't want to put in any natives. And then you find out that, well, oh, they already had a couple of native trees on that lot, and maybe that satisfied that one per thousand square feet or something like that. You could go with the, uh, something that's a little bit more relaxed in that sense, um, that you just regulate trees to be so many per every thousand square feet, you know? One per every thousand square feet or one per every 2,000 square feet. And in that way, the whole canopy would be established over the city. You can do something a little, you know, simpler in a way.
Okay, thank you. I think, uh, simple is important. Um, I think I'd like to move us on to the third task. And I know we've got both William and Carol on here. I'm not sure if, uh, William, did you say? And I know we've got both William and Carol on here. I'm not sure if, William, did you say you were going to give a summary?
Carol and I were approaching this from two different avenues, where Carol had a desire for rainwater harvesting, I believe. And then I had a more of a desire about stormwater treatment. And Carol, would it be okay if I went first?
Oh, please, go ahead.
All right. I spent a bit of time going around my little neighborhood over here in Lucadia, looking at the stormwater treatment and green streets. And it seems that it's like a monoculture of a, you know, native naturalized grass. So I was hoping that, you know, what I was looking at was, since we're doing cities mandating green streets with the curb cuts for that, as well as any type of developments, stormwater treatment, if we can somehow create a requirement that the plant palette was something of a meadow, or as I saw in the multiple species having that conservation, we have a lot of grasslands in the area, something that ties that all together. And I know it gets complicated with the types of soil that we have to put into the stormwater areas, because it needs to be able to hold and retain. And it just felt like that was a win-win, since the city's mandating it and then the city can then manage that. Again, I've walked around, saw some interesting succulents in somebody's basin. Somebody had lovely planting a jasmine. And then in a lot of others, there's just this monoculture of these grasses, which, you know, half of them burned out or died and they didn't replenish. And it would be, I guess, a win-win-win with water quality, native planting. And then that, that plant material would be the same amount of water or less water than what is already being planted or planned for those areas. So that, that's where I was going with this task and wondering what that looks like and how city staff felt about that, since I know Eric's on here and he's our stormwater guy.
Yeah. Any, any questions about what William's presenting or any further comments? Yes, Katie?
Yeah, I guess I'm not so familiar with storm water management. Is there ordinance right now where private res, private property has to have some sort of stormwater management utilizing vegetation?
If, if you're, if you're adding on to your house, you're creating more impervious surface. As a existing single-family residential, you have to retain and treat the water on property. That's the gentleman down the street did that project. A developer would come in and I believe they could choose to either treat the entire development, like over where I'm at on Clark, and funnel all the water into one large basin or over here on Channel Islands, where each individual homeowner gets two to three basins that they treat all the runoff from their property and they can plant it however they want.
Eric, could you give a high-level kind of overview of why, and not why, but how this applies to stormwater manager?
Sure. You know, as I was hearing Commissioner Morrison describe that, I mean, there really is a good opportunity to connect the goals of this group and, and, and those obligations that are being placed on development projects for stormwater treatment and capture and those types of things. What it would really probably be come down to in terms of some definition on that is the types of BMPs or best management practices that would be installed. For instance, if, if the facility that's being installed for treatment control to meet the treatment control obligations is more of a flow-through type of a system where you're wanting that you're getting the treatment through the flow, through the distance of flow or through the, through the length of, of, of water flow through the planted material, that may not lend itself as well to some of those, those plant palettes. I'm not familiar with a lot of the plants. That's not really my, my wheelhouse. But, but so I, my take home really is, is yes, you're right, Commissioner Morrison. Those things are obligations on a lot of these development projects. It covers the gamut of, of, of projects. So it's not just residential. It covers commercial, it covers municipal, all those, all those different areas. So, you know, I don't think it's, it's out of the, the scope of what this group is trying to accomplish, to connect the two together. And we'd be open to, to evaluating that further for sure. I think it's a good connection, actually.
Awesome. Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome.
Carol?
Yeah. And, and that's actually what I was going to be talking about. I, is exactly Katie's point, that I did not know about these stormwater regulations that happen to new development. And I've lived here for 17 years. And, you know, like most people that live here are in an established home. And I, I think it would be, I think this would be a good opportunity to tell people about, you know, how the city would like residents to be able to retain the water in their properties and, and the use of native plants in that, in those retentions and retention projects.
Awesome.
So that's really all I had to say for this point.
I think what I'm hearing is that there's more opportunity to look into this. And so we maybe put that on our list as we move forward. Any other questions before we move on? Awesome. Okay, item four, objectives as far as permitting fees, existing codes that need updating, cities, rural. Are there any thoughts that anyone would like to share that William and Kevin on this item?
Well, to be honest, there's not much to share at this point on this. A lot of this depends on what it is we need, we decide to do. We know where native species are called out in our code. It's not a lot of places. And so this one, I, I think is for our next meeting, once we have some direction.
I could actually speak specifically to this item, Kevin, because I got my plan check comments back for my Rancho Coastal Humane Society and is asking you demonstrate my percentage at 50%. So I thought about that and maybe Joy could help me out here. It, is it, it's not clearly defined on what 50%, is that 50% of ground cover? 50% of the square footage, 50% of the?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think as it's understood by our staff who's reviewing the plans, it's by the area. So by the square.
But like a tree canopy, that's just this, that's where I got fuzzy. I'm like, well, I got tree canopies and that's covering 50% of my area. Do my trees count then? Okay.
You bring up a good point, though. There's a lot, it's really easy to get in a situation where it's hard to quantify what you're doing. And so our reviewers have a hard time, you know, kind of checking the box. Have you done what you're supposed to do? So we need to keep that in mind as we're developing our thoughts about what's important for us to do here. And then, then kind of bouncing off of our staff and our experts there to see how it's, it's, we want to make some recommendations about how to actually achieve that. So.
Yes, some, some better metrics, so I can, I can feel comfortable checking the box and responding to staff. So, or, or any other professionals, Joy, like yourself.
Everyone be on the same page, make it measurable.
Yes.
And that goes back to the doable. If, if there are any more questions on this, I do have one more comment on this one myself. And then if there are any other questions, I'll take them. But I noticed that we didn't include the opportunity for incentives in any of our other tasks. So it might be, we could add to item four, that we look at the use of incentives as we, as we evaluate how to address this in our code. Unless anyone's opposed to that.
Good point.
All right, we will jump along then to the item number five, preservation. Now I've got Tony on this, but we also have preservation kind of, in number 10, that Susan and Kevin are addressing. So anyone who would like to speak up about preservation and removals, feel free to do that right now. So first, Tony, is there anything you wanted to add to preservation?
Yeah, I, this is going to be quite different than what Susan is going to have to say, I expect. So I wanted to share a little quick story, working at the Ocean Oak Canyon Restoration Site that we're partnered with the NCS Union School District for. We had a volunteer work party day down there and one of the people who lives in a neighboring residential property came down to see what was going on. And one of our volunteers showed him around a little bit essentially and showed him one of the Delmar manzanitas that grows in there. We've, we've found three in there so far. And the remarkable thing about it isn't that, it's that he noted that he had those in his own yard. And this guy had recently purchased the house actually from a longtime Quail Botanical Garden, San Diego Botanic Garden volunteer, one of our docents had previously owned this home. And so it turns out that there are three Delmar manzanita, federally protected endangered species in this person's yard and, and he had no idea. And so what I wanted to share as it relates to this subject is that I think we have opportunity here to kind of create almost a, a club or a socially driven type of accreditation or celebration of the plants that people already are stewarding in their landscapes. And there's a couple of different ways that something like that could be enacted. So the most basic thought that I had related to this would be that the city could actually create an iNaturalist project. Are any of you familiar with that software? And if people were so inclined, they could essentially catalog their own native plants as part of this Encinitas, you know, biodiversity project or whatever would end up becoming. And as part of that, then whomever it would be, either the city directly or some kind of, you know, nonprofit partner, I'm not trying to exactly sign myself up for work here, but somebody could potentially actually reach out to folks like that and have them be part of an ongoing process to feel like they're part of something bigger. It could be related to stewarding those things in terms of maintenance and management. So kind of, here's what you might expect to be doing with your endangered plants at this time of the year. These are all just total food for thought, kind of brainstorming level ideas. But I think that there's potentially something that we could build out of what is already there, because it's so much easier to preserve what is already there than to try to grow three more Delmar manzanita.
So your thoughts, if I could summarize it, are yes, it's important to preserve. And there's some areas where we have some, we may have some influence over that. And that's a high priority. But there's also areas beyond what we're going to have influence on, which might be existing homes and land associated with existing homes, where we could expand the ethic of stewardship to include those homes and, and people where they're interested.
Yeah, exactly. In the Botanic Garden world, we have this kind of emerging in a really important way concept known as a meta-collection. And so what that looks like is that we're managing plants that aren't all physically located at the garden itself. And so that would be the highest level version of what I've been thinking about in this respect, which would actually be to kind of embrace people's plants as part of a citywide kind of inventory and, and have that count for something. What that would look like is to be determined. But I think that this should all be positive, because you're not going to be able to do anything that's not already in place as it relates to alteration of these plants. There's already laws or there are not, and it's not going to be a city law that covers it. But we might be able to encourage and motivate and kind of highlight and praise and those types of things.
Okay. Could you tell me the name of that program again, I something?
I Naturalist.
Okay. Any questions for Tony? Okay, since it does seem like these are two separate things, maybe Susan, we can wait and get to you on item number 10. I, I think you might have some different things to present. Let's just keep it in numerical order, and if that's okay, and go to item number six, public property policy recommendations for roads, parks, public facilities, city open spaces, HOAs, and open space easements. Katie, I think you are on this.
Yes, that's me. And I have a PowerPoint, if you wouldn't mind loading it.
Not at all. Let me get that set up.
This is a lot of really good information. I really appreciate everyone putting some effort into this and sharing your expertise.
Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, so Bruce and I did meet about this and he had some really great input and he's probably listening in tonight. So thank you, Bruce, for your contribution, contribution. And next slide, please, Anna. So as we kind of synthesize the information, Bruce and I came up with sort of three main issues in regards to the owned space. So there's a need to harmonize native plant policy on public land with existing city, county, and state efforts, policies, and laws. We need to accurately categorize and locate different types of public land in Encinitas and then kind of think about how we want to treat those different types of land. And then, yeah, set native plant goals for the different categories of public land. Thank you. And so kind of, I'll talk next on the next item, item seven, but about the multiple habitat conservation program. But one, just kind of getting to recommendations, bringing these out there, please, let's just discuss this, what people think about these. And I know council has talked about this in the past, but you know, it seems pretty, pretty sensible that NC should pass the MHCP subarea plan, that native plant policy complement the biodiversity conservation goals that are really clearly laid out. And the MHCP, so much work was put into that, mapping of different habitat types of endangered and threatened and narrowly ranged plant species. So it really makes a lot of sense to draw from that information to, to kind of inform our native plant policy. And there seems to be a need to ensure that the city's intent to promote the planning of natives, that's going to be promulgated by native plant policy. We want to make sure that's reflected in the city's decision-making. So for example, Bruce had, you know, an example that he put forth that, you know, sometimes city staff is maybe not always aware of native plant policies and goals. So that, that should be something that's sort of communicated citywide. And then another recommendation is to identify existing city laws and policies that may need to be updated or changed to include public space and open space and a native plant policy. Okay, so Bruce went through municipal code and found some particularly relevant areas that we could think about here. So in title eight, under beaches, parks, and waterways, there's a section regarding plants and it says it shall be unlawful for any person to destroy a plant in the coastal zone. I don't know if we might want to call out natives in particular here. Next, please, Anna. Title 15, regarding city streets, there was a section that talked about municipal tree ordinance. And it talked about species cultivars and varieties. And so it says all trees to be planted in city rights of way shall conform to an approved tree palette. That's identifying adopted city and community master plan, general plans, blah, blah, blah. And exceptions may be granted. So this, you know, doesn't really call out natives. So we might want to think about that. Next, please. And then another relevant title was under building and construction. And so there's a section on water efficient landscape regulations. And it talks about a landscape design plan. So it says for the efficient use of water, a landscape shall be carefully designed and planned for the intended function of the project. Methods to achieve water efficiency shall include one or more of the following. And it lists a bunch of different criteria, but these are the ones that are kind of that are relevant to natives. So it says protection and preservation of native species, selection of water conserving plant, tree, and turf species. So these, the first two do call out natives, but then there are a lot of other criteria that are listed. So we might want to think about just really emphasizing natives here if we are wanting to kind of encourage natives being planted over non-natives. encourage natives being planted over non-natives. And so, okay, second uh, issue is we need to accurately categorize and locate different types of public land within Encinitas. Please Anna. And I'm sure you're all familiar with San GIS, this mapping tool that has been compiled by Sandag. It has hundreds of different layers, but there's lots of different layers that are relevant to the native plant policy. There's vegetation type, soil type, current and planned land use categories, topography, sensitive habitat, habitat zones, climate zones are some of them. And here's just a map um, of most of, well, some of Encinitas. Um, and then it's, I selected a bunch of different layers, the layers that are being shown here, the different colors are soil type and um, ecology. So I guess this is sort of like meditation type. Next slide please. And then um, you can look at all the different habitat layers. Not habitat layers, data layers that exist for this Sandag database. Um, and here are just a couple, as I was scrolling through the PDF, there are a couple that pop out that are particularly relevant for the native plant policy. So there's this coastal zone sensitive slopes habitat that maps sensitive habitat areas in the coastal zone. There's um, a data set that maps environmentally sensitive slopes and whole sites containing various species of biological resources such as coastal sage and chaparral. So I'm not sure if cities already kind of using, utilizing this. It seems like the county native plant policy efforts are utilizing this data, but just wanted to make the group aware of these if they aren't ready. Next slide please. And then uh, we want to just think about setting native plant goals for the various categories of public land. And this is just a discussion. Don't want to have any recommendations here. Next slide please. Anna, I can, we can go to the next slide please.
I think we're looking for the next slide, Anna. It could be she's having some difficulty.
Oh yeah, I don't know if I froze or not.
Um, well.
Yeah, I have my PowerPoint on.
I think there was a little technical difficulty there. Is there something you'd like to continue to present to us, Katie?
Sure, let me see if I can share my screen actually, um.
I am so sorry. Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
I got kicked off.
Oh, okay.
Apologize for that. Give me one minute. I have to sign myself back in.
Okay.
My desk.
Yeah, so the next slide was just um, showing the different land types. And we've already talked a lot of, uh, about these. We've kind of already touched on this, but um, there's kind of different public land types to consider. So city-owned land types include parks, road right-of-ways, other publicly-owned land like Pacific New School. Um, and then there's the issue of the HOA land that ha- that some may have open space easements. And this seems sort of particularly tricky from a perduing standpoint, and that is definitely not my real house. So maybe the planning commission missionaries can sort of provide input for that. And then for county-owned land, there are school districts, water and sanitation areas. Um, areas managed by California Department of Fish and Wildlife, state parks, other state lands, and then there's power lines and gas pipelines. So this would be like the, the train track zone. So there are um, yeah, different types of land to consider and we probably want to take different approaches in these different places in land.
As, as Anna's pulling that up and you can just show us, um, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we can go on to the next slide now. Oh yeah, and so that, that was it for objective eight. We want to have a discussion before we fall into objective nine. I guess, sorry, that was.
So. Um, I see that Tony has his hand up. Uh, we can start with, start with Tony. And I also. No?
Yeah, I just wanted to mostly second and support what Katie had presented here. I think that it's really important to clarify and be distinct about different land purposes and how they'll be managed. And I do think that you're not, nobody's going to be surprised to hear me say as much, but that an MHCP would um, in one fell swoop amount to a lot of what we're seem to be trying to get at through this process.
Thank you, Tony. Yeah, and I understand MHCPs well myself. Um, but if I could, I'm not sure that everybody does. And so if I could maybe try to summarize just briefly, really what the, the goals of MHCPs are and whether we actually try to go back and approve our, our subarea or we just apply some of the same goals, but the goals are to categorize the land and to identify where there's values for habitat and native plants and create a hierarchy of those areas where there's the most values. So um, it's essentially an overlay that, and we have that mapping from back when we did our draft subarea plan. So um, what I, one thing I want to just briefly pause uh, and ask Anna is uh, we're running late and uh, we still want to do public comments. Um, and we will get to that. So I just kind of want to warn everybody, uh, we're going to have to kind of expedite and get to that. And we do want to get to it and we will get to it. I see that someone who's participating had their hand up and would it be appropriate for us to wait until public comment? Anna, to address people who aren't part of the panel?
Uh, yes, it, it is up to um, the group. I think that that's probably the most efficient way is to make sure we do it all in one um, uh, time slot.
Okay.
So we can put a, an end time to, you know, maybe you know, if you want to stop at seven thirty or seven forty-five and make sure that they have the time to speak. Um, maybe that could be an option.
Okay, um, so what I, what I'd like to propose is that we go through the remaining uh, items and keep uh, the time in mind as you're presenting, when you have additional uh, information to present. And then we will jump to see what the public comment is and switch gears to that. Um, and I believe if there's, should be a tool, if you would like to give public comment, then you raise your hand and Anna will take you in the order your hands are raised and you will have, I believe, three minutes. So let's jump to your next item then Katie. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, if you don't mind pulling the PowerPoint back up Anna, you're on the next slide. Okay, cool. So this one was, um, let's see, what was this was design. Um, so, okay, so here's the MHCP. Um, the MHCP um, already identifies these kind of imports. So uh, we interpreted design as being kind of um, where, where we want to prioritize planting of native. Um, so we could again, go back to the MHCP for this. Um, which identifies biological core and linkage areas. So um, this serves as the best case conservation alternative and identifies large contiguous areas of habitat and all important functional linkages and movement corridors between them. So right there, we've got that already mapped out for Encinitas. Because NCIS is pretty urbanized, um, the MHCP basically stated that the majority of remaining natural habitat in NCIS is classified as a biological core and linkage area. Next slide please Anna. And then, so um, the MHCP already mapped out um, the different vegetation types within biological core and linkage areas. So that would be, you know, a great tool for us to draw from. And next slide please. And then the MHCP also maps out endangered, threatening, narrow edemic plant locations. Next slide please. And so from this, you know, some recommendations that we came uh, up with or that we could sort of utilize these habitat zones. They're designated already in the San GIS database um, to determine which native plant species may be most appropriate for different areas of Encinitas. And this is getting really specific. So this is a little bit in, in contrast to the more kind of simple, simpler maybe easier to implement ideas that Ari and Tony advocated for in the beginning. Um, but if we want to, to get narrower, we could use this in GIS data. And then we could utilize the biological core linkage areas and these intended plant locations that were determined in MHCP to designate priority areas for restoration. If we have open space that we want to, maybe not a full-blown technical ecological restoration, but you know, something, something along those lines. Um, and then some issues that may arise in doing this, you, you know, you might need to think about, do we need to conduct, does the city need to conduct a new analysis based on current data or is the former analysis from the MHCP, I believe that was from two thousand and three. So will that still be sufficient? Um, a new analysis, you know, wouldn't require collecting new data. Sandag has all the data layers, but you know, it would require a new analysis and where would that funding come from? The next slide. I guess that's it.
That was very good, very thorough. Thanks, thanks a lot. Are there any questions for Katie? Thank you. Uh, Tony?
Joy, I just wanted to point out, especially since we too have some park staff involved on the meeting that um, even though we haven't signed an MHCP, that there was some prioritization about natural spaces and restoration. Um, so it's another good resource for people to look through if they're interested in that type of stuff, the Encinitas Habitat Stewardship Plan.
Thank you, Tony. Anna?
I did just want to mention that um, as far as uh, current discretionary review, we do utilize and anything possible that is available, including the, the county maps to start with. Um, and use that as our kind of baseline. However, for private discretionary projects, we do ask them to do site-specific analysis. Um, and that, that's, I just wanted to mention that that is our current process right now to where, you know, we would do a site visit, we would see if there is vegetation and then ask for a specific um, site analysis.
Great. Thank you, Anna. We'll jump to item eight, which Tony, you, your name was on. Do you have something to present?
Yeah, I think that this is actually a major motivation behind my suggestion all the way through to keep this fairly like broad and simple because approachable, I guess I might call it. Um, it, functionally, there aren't any native plant nurseries that are production nurseries that serve exclusively coastal San Diego County. In fact, there's only one production for retail native plant nursery effectively in San Diego County. And I say this with all due respect for people like Ryan West and Tori Neal. I have huge amounts of respect for these people. Jose Cohen, who runs Musa Creek now, effectively is the only production nursery of native plants in our county. And that's with the county of nearly two thousand species of plants like Ari mentioned in the first place. So I think that we have to be really cautious in this whole process of suggesting that if we build it, they will come because it hasn't borne out very well so far. And this is a big part of why I'm advocating for a broader sort of plant palette schematic approach because it allows the producers of these plants to have a broader market base as well. And it's a really important piece of this. There's almost no scalability to a hyper-local nursery um, premise. In, in fact, if we get too detailed about this stuff, I'm going to have to grow it all. And we don't have the space for it. We don't have the staff for it. And so I want you all to kind of think about this from a market economics perspective and how small of a market Encinitas native plants are. And there's some amazing small-scale producers out there, the California Native Plant Societies. Um, San Diego Chapter Sales are probably the best native plant sale in the whole county. But they don't produce at a scale where people can spec it into a landscape park and text project. And if we're talking about that type of approach of using native plants, then I think that we have to allow a lot of leeway and try to create a atmosphere that's favorable for the people producing this stuff to actually make money doing it.
All right. Well, that's, that's good input. Carol, do you have a question?
Um, I, I just was thinking that, um, you know, I don't know how possible it is and I've never been in an ordinance um, uh, committee like this. Um, but it seems like um, uh, having a local nursery or a representative of local nurseries to be part of this group might be a, I, I, I don't know if this is a reasonable proposal at all, but um, it just seems like that's, that's part of the, part of the pro- problem, part of the solution is to have nurseries um, that will make these, well, that will sell these native plants.
You make a good point and um, we may have the opportunity in the future as this gets developed and we get more input to include them and that, that sounds like a good next step. Uh, Ari?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great idea what Carol's saying. I just want to bring a little bit of um, context in from the experience of the, of the county. So that, you know, the county and their, you know, parallel attempt to, to do something similar to what we're doing here. Um, did try to really robustly engage the, the um, nursery community. And it was a really interesting process because um, the nursery community was, you, you know, I would say skeptical. Um, you know, and I think that there really are economic considerations for nurseries that, that, you know, where, where this kind of an, of a, of a market response is for some reason very, very challenging for nurseries that are, are, you know, challenged in many ways with their operations to integrate native plant growing. I mean, the, the the few, you know, you know, with, you know, Tony mentioned, you know, Musa Creek who are great and, you know, they, they really seem to value native plants. They love doing it. Uh, you know, I, I wouldn't be surprised if they analyzed it and kind of they made less money on their native plants, you know, relative to other um, you know, things that they sell. Um, you, you know, the other big native plant nursery in the area that was in technically an Orange County's Tree of Life Nursery, which is wonderful. And, you know, they, they absolutely collect and carry, you know, San Diego sourced materials and they're great. And, you know, I know for a fact from talking to them that, you know, they could be running their nursery in a, in a way that'd be much more lucrative if they were, were broader. Um, so it's, you know, there's definitely a real economic challenge with the um, you know, with, with the, just the model of, of native plants, you know, that, that, that's hard for a lot of nurseries to be willing to overcome. I, I think we're only going to understand that over time by talking really robustly with the nursery, you know, um, owners, managers and network. Um, but I think it's, again, I've been, I've been in this world for many years in many different states. And I still don't really understand exactly why that is, how the market forces really work. And so just, just, you know, um, you know, really to, to, to hat tip to what Tony said, really repeat what he said, you know, having a really an evolvable program is really good because there's so much we don't yet know and, and there are there are, you know, even outside of the science and, and the ecology, there's, there's really a complex, you know, nursery market. Um, you know, again, recognizing most of the nurseries, most of us go to don't actually produce their plants. They're, they're retail nurseries. There's a wholesale nursery somewhere behind it that's doing the sourcing and propagation. Um, it's, it's, it's a really complex issue that would be exciting to figure out, but it's certainly been a very calcit- calcitrant problem so far.
Thank you, Ari. Tony?
Um, I wanted to mention for one thing that the nature collective would be another good entity to involve in this. They're not exactly a nursery entity yet, but there's some discussion of that in their future potentially. Um, and I also did want to acknowledge, this is kind of a nod to the people doing the nursery horticulture work with our native plants that some of them are extremely technically challenging. And so that is a functional bottleneck as well to increasing the diversity of this stuff in our landscapes. And I mentioned Delmar Manzanita earlier, and that's a good example that even if the demand was there to get that kind of supply up and out there would be really difficult logistically and in terms of the technical horticulture. So there's more to this than just the we need customers. Some of it is actually that there needs to be some investment in horticultural research and science as well.
Thanks, Tony. Robert?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I'm going to talk about this on the outreach part in, in, in a second, but um, you know, Carol and I both talked about this, that getting the nurseries involved is a, is a critical part and it's kind of a win-win situation, but it's a chicken and egg situation, right? If there's no, no demand, then the nurseries aren't going to supply the product. They're, they're in business to sell stuff. But if we can create that demand, you know, if we can get people excited about native plants and there's demand for it, then maybe more nurseries get involved. So a- again, that's kind of a preview of the outreach stuff we talked about.
Thanks, Robert. I'm hearing that more researches and more, more in-depth study of this is needed. Ari?
Yeah, just really quickly, one, one model that seems to be working up in Santa Barbara, um, you know, where they're dealing with very, very similar issues. Um, is, you know, where there are large products, projects, you know, by the city or by, you know, large, you know, nonprofit land managing organizations. They do contract growings of new natives. Um, you know, with, and they try to spread that around to different local growers. And, you know, the, the, the logic there is that, hey, if, you know, if we guarantee a price, you know, so it'll be profitable for four hundred plants, most growers are going to grow five hundred and test the market. Um, and so that's a really nice way, you know, as we have those larger maybe restoration style, you know, projects or products that serve, you know, goals like in the, you know, Encinitas, you have. you know, goals like in the, you know, Encinitas Habitat Stewardship, you know, program and, and other things, you know, so we do this at the Botanic Garden. I'm sure Nature Collective does too. You know, those, those targeted efforts are really strong ways to try to help build, you know, that market and build that engagement from the nurseries and anything in this ordinance that can, that can, you know, potentially fund more of those efforts, you know, would, would, would go a good way to help as well.
Right. Well, thank you very much. I think we're going to jump to item nine, education and outreach, and that's Robert and Carol.
Okay. Is it possible I can share my screen or, or? I didn't email anything in anyone. So can I, I have an Excel file I could share if?
I believe you can. Yes. Have the share screen.
Here we go. Let me know when you can see it.
Yep, I can see it.
Great. Yeah. So, so Carol and I just kind of brainstormed through a bunch, bunch of different possibilities for outreach and and we, you know, the, the first part of it is what is success for outreach? And it's not really, you know, getting to people like the folks on the phone that are knowledgeable and enthusiastic and ready to join. It's really getting to people like me that are not knowledgeable, are slightly enthusiastic, but are willing to, to join in with, when presented with, you know, an opportunity or something that's, that's good. And, and so we kind of broke down the outreach into three sections, like what is it that we're trying to do? You know, and the intent of that is explaining the scope of it. The details of it are really going to be defined by all the smart folks on the phone with all, and all the other teams. So that'll fill in that section. The why part of it is explaining the benefits, you know, why, why do we want to do this? And, you know, at a high level, the biodiversity and water and the culture and natural beauty and all the rest of it. And again, those details will be filled in by, by the other teams that are working here, but the real, the real beef of this is the how. I think, you know, I mean, my one data point with native plants, my wife bought like a lemon berry bush 10 years ago or something and it was 80 bucks and we planted it with really good soil and gave it a ton of water and then it died like 30 days later, well, because we planted it in really good soil with a ton of water. So, you know, you know, a how to, just simple instructions for folks that, that, you know, don't know. I call it native plants for dummies type thing, but that, that would, you know, very easy thing to, to help people out with on what to buy, where to put it. And, and, and even maps or, you know, suggested plants to go together in certain kind of conditions. And so you can see, we, you know, we kind of outlined over on the right, the different forms of media and a lot of these are, are very obvious, but there's a lot of touchpoints already with the city, right? With the advocate and the website and mailers and, you know, we do workshops for the mobility thing and all that. So there could be a native plant one maybe or, or webinars, you know, different things appeal to different people, you know, Carol and I both had different ideas that appealed to us or maybe we're, you know, there, there's, there's different ways to reach people and it's not just one, one method. So we tried to outline, you know, all these different ideas on how we could do that. Again, probably this is more of a starting point than anything, but we really, again, believe that local nursery participation is a, is a key part of that because it's a win-win scenario for everybody. But there's other things like farmers markets and street fairs and all the different events that take place are opportunities to have a booth and have people knowledgeable to help sell it, you know, we're trying to sell this and get people, I liked what Ari said earlier about getting people excited about getting these plants, you know, my wife would be very excited about it if she, if she knew what to get and where to put it. So, and then we kind of did a frequency of one of these things we would do. You know, the first two sections are really more of the first year, we kind of laid out a two-year timeline and then the how-to stuff kind of spans the whole timeline. So that, that was kind of our idea on, you know, a lot of details need to be put into this, but uh, I, I think that kind of envelops how, how we would envision the successful outreach.
Gosh, there's a lot of great information here. I appreciate it from both of you. And probably, probably not going to drill down too much in the details right now, but if you could share the spreadsheet, I think it'd be really valuable for the whole committee to see. And was there anything else, Carol, to, to present on this item?
Oh, I was just going to say that Carol Wolf helped me think about communications and because she's, she was a former environmental commissioner and also she's on the U F A C. And U F A C is trying to look at public outreach as well. So, thank you, Carol.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. I know you weren't able to come to the first meeting, so thanks for jumping in. Appreciate that. Okay, one more item and that's Susan and Kevin and it's policy for removing natives or culturally significant trees reuse and repurposing. And what we'll do is we'll go through this item and discuss amongst ourselves and then we're going to jump over to the public comment.
Well, we did send you a presentation.
And Anna might have that. I did send it to her.
Give me the name of that one, just so I know I'm getting the right one up. Which, what is the name of it?
Let me see here. Hang on. I think it's called considerations protect versus remove, something like that. It starts with the word considerations.
I think it's from me, Anna, and it was originally from Green D W G, which is Susan's email.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess the first thing that we're thinking about is, you know, removal versus protection. What, how would we decide, right? So we would need an assessment would be the first priority. And to assess it, we'd have to have an expert take a look and then, you know, go through all of the different process that an expert does to assess the tree. And what we would want to do is to ensure that certain trees that we've already decided are heritage or are, you know, protected because of historical significance or because they're a native tree that is of a certain size that we would definitely want to protect and prohibit that from being removed. But if visual inspection and photographic inspection and deeper inspection by the certified arborist would reveal that the tree is, is not able to survive and it has to come down, then or that it, that it can't survive in its location because it's threatened by, by a construction or something. We could consider transplanting that tree. And if it's going to be transplanted, we found that it could take up to a year to prepare the tree to be removed if it's a big tree. And it may be prohibitively expensive. We would have to determine some policies around that. And also the site where the tree needs to go would also need preparation. So there are certain steps that would have to be considered in terms of that tree being transplanted and so on. So if the tree is actually got to come down because it's too diseased, there's no suitable transportation transplantation scenario, then we also would want to consider the possibility of repurposing. So if, if it's transplanted, of course, there's maintenance and all of that that would go into ensuring survival, but let's say that it actually has to come down. So if it has to come down, its life is far from over, that trees could be repurposed and Kevin Doyle has something to say about how he has been able to repurpose some of the trees from 101. So I'll turn that over to Kevin.
Thank you, Susan. Am I live? Don't go. Couldn't tell if I was muted or not. So we've actually have a, a pretty decent history in this town of repurposing our lumber as it comes down. I know Ari and Tony, you know, when we had the, the sawmill up at the Leach Tag Foundation, there was when trees came down, they didn't have to go very far. They were, we ended up with some just phenomenal lumber that's turned into some amazing, amazing street furniture. I know a couple of years, God, it's probably been three or five years now when we had the last big eucalyptus come down. They were sliced up and they were cured and sliced up into benches, which now go up and down Powerline Park in New Encinitas. They're, they're awe inspiring. When you see them, it's like logs this big that you can sit on and jump on or just, you know, it hits you in your gut when you see it. So we're losing three more, one of them, the first one came down today in front of a corner frame shop. The two in front of the post office will come down tomorrow. I was meeting today with Russ Laban and Greg Gomez from the contractor and, and David, who's our, our woodworker who works with eucalyptus is building the, the custom benches that we have from the last couple of trees. Jeez, I have to kind of like put epochs into the different tree removal periods, but not the trees from in the power line, but the ones between then and now. So those are already turned into six really phenomenal benches. Big flat slabs of wood with exposed bark. We were talking earlier, up at Ocean Knoll School has several of our trees and one of them that's carved into a ginormous lizard that the kids jump on and play. It's, it's just a playground furniture that nobody knows where it comes from. It's just, you know, a big piece of wood. So a big piece of wood that grew here in Encinitas is, is a native. It's, it not just a, not as we're talking about native plants, but it's a Lucadia native. It's an Encinitas native. It's a Cardiff native and I want to keep them here in town. And the best way to do that is to find actual uses for that wood. Now we've gone into the difficulties of trying to carve a, a tree into a sculpture like where it lives in Swamis. There, you know, those trees are meant to rot in place and will one day fall. But hopefully we'll probably not kill anyone when they do. Some of the street trees that we've looked into doing this are city arborists kind of just as, ah, you know, it's, it's still rotten at the base and it will still fall and it will still weigh six to 8,000 pounds and you know, we just can't do that. So you know, we're trying our best to see how to reuse the wood. How many uses can we find for this wood? And it's an added expense and sometimes it's wood that we could have sourced from somewhere else for a lot cheaper. But it's a that doesn't matter. I mean, what we want is we want to keep what's ours, ours. One of the plans we're doing, we've, we've photographed, we've been, we took a lot of video of the removal of today's tree and our goal is to kind of QR code, the eventual street furniture that comes from this. So that residents can, you know, sit, they'll sit on a bench and they'll take a picture of a QR code and it will link to a page that basically will tell you the, the history of that tree, but historical photos if we have them. Its final days. It's time in the lumberyard, it's milling and till eventually there it is. The bench you're sitting on or the shelter you're under.
I want to thank you both, just to, just to kind of bring this to the next step. I want to thank you both for this important information. These trees and their stories are very valuable to our community. And I, I just want to kind of present to the group that this is something where it may apply to not only natives, because we don't have a vast amount of native, true native trees, but it may apply to all mature trees and we are, the city is also has identified developing a mature tree preservation policy. So there may be some overlap here between other policies the city is considering developing and, and this important work here to preserve and repurpose trees. I want to just thank everyone for all their great input. I do want to suggest that if Anna doesn't already have your, yeah, Kevin, if Anna doesn't already have your presentation, the best thing to do is send it to Anna. And then maybe Anna, you can make all of the presentations available to the full committee. I think that's probably the best way to do it. And what I'm going to suggest is the next step would be to hear from our public who's been very patient. Thank you. I hope you found the information presented by our, many of our experts here interesting to this evening. And I want to, we want to hear your thoughts. And then after we hear from the public, I will just summarize in a few words since we're running over. All right. Anna, would you like to take it?
I'm sure. So I have Mark Wisnewski and then Bruce after that so far. Those are the only two hands that I see that are up. So if you do wish to speak, please raise your hand. I see Amy next on that. And I'll keep trying to keep track and hopefully I'll see them come in the right order.
Thank you.
And let's see here, I'm, I'm sure I'm trying to, I know how to do it, but there's not a not sure if our I T is online, but it's not allowing me to add them as a panelist as the instructions say. So I apologize as I try to figure this out.
Is there an allow to talk button?
Yeah, typically there is and nothing is showing up for me next to their names.
I have, maybe I'm the only one who has it, which is odd because I'm not the host, but I've just, I think I've just allowed Mark Wisnewski to talk.
The unmute button. Can you hear me?
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to start three minutes for each speaker. Okay?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the committee and their wonderful work tonight. In 1992, the community planted 101 California native trees to make a corridor connection from Bataguitos Lagoon to Cottonwood Creek. We planted coast live oak, Torrey pines, California sycamore and Monterey cypress, which is not a native of San Diego County. The idea was create a native plant, tree corridor that birds and other wildlife could utilize. Lucadia streetscape was a lost opportunity to highlight the planting of additional native trees and plants to show the wide diversity that native plants could provide. Home Depot failed to achieve the city mandated tree cover due to severe over pruning, which I absolutely tried to stop when it was in process. The store manager couldn't stop it because it's done by a district manager that does all the stores. So the trees are over pruned and topped. And then when I talk and also the, some died poor maintenance, I talked to the city planner and he says there was no method to require compliance or to cause a fine for failure to comply. So they could do whatever the heck they wanted and they have. Most space and commercial sites do not allow for large trees, which most of the California native trees that we can grow are very large. U F A C did a city tree list that promotes many species diversity, which is a tenant of urban forestry. You don't concentrate in a few species. You have a wide variety of species in case you have an insect or disease that can attack and wipe out a lot of trees such as Dutch elm disease back east a number of years ago. And again, mostly the trees that are native to San Diego County are very large growing species and we typically don't allow large species, spaces in our commercial and city projects. I will concede the rest of my time to the next person. Unless there's some questions.
Well, thank you, Mark. I think we'll go to the next speaker. Appreciate it.
So next we have Bruce Sailors.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Hello. Hey, thank, first of all, thank you, Katie. You did a great job and yeah, I think you added a lot and thank you for the plug. And secondly, thank you to everybody else because I think I've been listening all along here. The information is great. I think you're going in the right direction. One thing, can we get the presentation sent to the public too? I like, I'd like to see copies of them. They, they're great and very useful. The one, one little addition I would have to what Katie spoke about is I've been looking back at over the last three, four, five years that we've been approving things on planning commission and looking in particular in open space easements and how the city is currently describing them. And for the most part, they just say open space, open space covenant, and there's nothing about main, for the most part, there's nothing about maintaining the, the natural habitat. I think I found one where there was a little mention, but again, no stewardship, no nothing. And so I do believe there's an opportunity to as, as one of the mechanisms to apply to private development is in the development condition. So I think we'll work for those, probably too detailed to go further into it today. But I would just, and I, I offered over an email to Katie to continue helping if she needs me to continue delving into this and I'll funnel everything through Katie. That's it.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much, Bruce. Appreciate it.
And then I still only see one remaining comment, but I see that I'm not sure if re-raised his hand. So we'll get to him after, but we'll go to Amy next.
Hi, my name is Amy Freeman. I am a longtime homeowner, homeowner here in Lucadia. I have a quarter of an acre lot and I went native, so to speak, about 15 years ago. And with the help of And with the help of a lot of books and some, we have a, an amazing group of local experts here in San Diego that are available to the public. Uh, I was able to do about 99% natives in my yard with the exception of a lawn for my husband. Um, I have some concerns about, uh, future and current development happening, especially here in Lucadia. We have a new hotel. We have another hotel that's going in next to it. We have, uh, a development at the old Madison, uh, Florist project. We have a 48 home development going in on La Costa Boulevard, which is just west of the gas station. We have a lot of, uh, projects about to be approved and are already approved to meet our housing needs. I'm concerned about what the rules are for landscaping in these future projects. And are they going to include natives, um, as part of their, their permitting process? I wonder if someone could speak to that.
Um, certainly we will. Are you complete with your comments?
Um, I just wanted to thank you all for taking up this topic. Some of us have been on this bandwagon a long time and are trying to convert our neighbors. But I think incentive helps. I think keeping it broad helps. I like what Tony said. Let's keep it simple. Let's keep it broad. Let's keep it doable. At the same time, I feel like we also maybe need to, to stretch a little bit. I understand the economic challenges for some of the growers, but, but we still need to try. We still need to make the effort. Um, we're all aware of climate changes. We're all aware of our water issues. Let's not drag our feet. Let's, let's keep it simple. Let's make it doable. Let's have an entry level for people. And I think it's really important that we don't alienate people in the process. So I, I'm just so excited that we're, we're taking this up and, uh, I, you know, I'm on the bandwagon with you. And I just want to give a quick shout out to a visionary Bob Nanninga, who years ago, um, at this development near, near my home at Lucadia Oaks Park, made such a great case for natives and native trees. And you can all visit that park today and see what wonderful natives we have in that park. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Perfect timing. Um, just about three minutes. Um, so Joy, I know with, uh, the amount of time that we have left, I do see Mark's hand is raised again. And he did have one minute remaining in his three minutes. Um, so, um, would you, uh, like him to speak again? Okay, Mark, did you want to speak again?
I am trying to, oops, wait. Sorry, my computer's a little sluggish right now. I'm not, um, I'm not able to, for some reason, um,
About now.
Are you there? Good, good. Okay.
So, um, um, I'll give you the remaining one minute.
Thank you. Uh, I never lowered my hand. I guess what happened. Uh, what great comments we, we just got, uh, for somebody that's really been doing the, what we're, we're trying to get other people to do. But again, there are some limitations with native plants, particularly trees in the city treescape. You go get any, uh, Home Depot, you look at the Encinitas Ranch, very small planting areas, a lot of paving. And when they do put trees in a two-foot space between parking stalls, they get hit from the bumpers from the cars on either side. So we have to go back to the planning department also to make sure that there are ample opportunities to ensure that properly sized trees that can actually shade the parking lot, not palm trees, but shade trees. And sometimes those aren't natives. Can be used, you know, to achieve climate action plans. And so it's makes it a little bit more complex and a little more difficult. But, uh, that, that's life and, but we need to address those concerns as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak again.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mark. Um, and to answer, uh, a question that was presented by Amy. And, uh, we are talking about, uh, requirements for new development in the private sector. So when we get to move this ordinance forward, the objective is that it would, that it would apply to new developments in the private sector, which would wrap in some of the projects you're talking about. Uh, those types of projects. Uh, the sooner we move this forward, then the sooner this would be relevant to those projects. And so what I'd like to do now is, uh, just wrap up because I know we've got a lot of other things we could talk about. Uh, we've extended a little further than we anticipated. So I appreciate everyone's patience. I appreciate our public comments. Everything is so valuable and it's so great to see everyone's enthusiasm. Um, it, it's been universally accepted that this is a, a wonderful thing to bring forward. So let's keep that positive energy up. What I will do is, is work with the team of folks here, uh, to summarize what our comments were. And in some cases, I think we were a little bit more clear about some recommendations. In other cases, we were maybe clear that we needed to do more research. So for our next meeting, we will review what we've presented, what we've talked about, kind of, um, sort out where our first opportunities are and then get a little bit clearer to wrap up for staff, what our committee recommendations are. So I think we can do this in one more meeting. We might want to just plan on it being two hours. But if you can, if you can handle that, uh, I think we can do it. So awesome guys. Um, now I see Sharon, uh, Susan, you have your hand up. Is there something, is there, is there any final comments from anyone sharing you?
Well, I, I just, I just have a quick comment, um, based on, um, the, the Sandag document, I found that there is, uh, you know, a sub area plan for Encinitas that shows the different amounts of land by category and residential is 39%. 15% is undeveloped parks and rec, 15.1% public lands, which includes our roads, of course, which we can't plant on. 16.7% of the residential, 27.9% is still family residential. So what I wanted to say is the one, the reason I made that comment about having sort of a blanket simplification was that there's a lot of residential area, a lot of it. 39% is a big chunk of our, our entire city. And because we are largely about, um, something like 75 to 80% already built out, we probably do need to include residential and we probably need to think about some kind of blank.
I think you went on mute, Susan. Okay. All right. Good, good comments. Thank you all. And, uh, seeing no other hands, I'll go ahead and adjourn us for now. And we'll work out a time to meet in probably about a month. Thank you all for your input.
Thank you, everyone.
Ari, you're in the dark. It's time to go.
Joy, thank you, everyone.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.